August 28, 2018, County Board of Commissioners meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Mr. Tompkins?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
President.
Mr. Williams?
President.
Mr. Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Have a motion in support. Duckham and Rice. Any corrections, deletions, or additions to the agenda? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Agenda has carried. We have no awards and recognition to come before the board at this time. Communications and petitions, if anyone has anything in writing that they would like to present to the board, please step forward and give it to the clerk. Seeing none, we have no special orders nor public hearings. We've now arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are as follows: Each individual will state their name and have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Public comment is now open.
My name is Alan Radka. I'm addressing the closing of Green Road. I want to thank Ag Industries and the Road Commission for addressing the continued washout of Green Road at Hideaway Lane. By installing a culvert, paving the road, it's long overdue, the need to address the runoff of water that comes down the hill. We hope you direct it so it is a final solution to that problem. We have had the need of all-wheel drives or four-wheel drives with the current condition of that road. And the use of Green Road is about to take another turn in its history. Whether you walk their dog, you bike it, run up and down at training for cross-country team, or if you just like the natural beauty of the road, going through the woods with it rolling elevation change, that's all about to change. The safety of the area will be greatly affected with that change. If hunting or horseback riding, emergency responder cannot use Loveland Road as the route to the location in need. And the residents on Clear Lake have those safety concerns as well. And because Ag is a good neighbor, they have the equipment and they have the skill to reinstate Green Road once the mining is completed. If they close in October, then I ask the board to reinstate the road in a year's time from that closing date. If it's December, if it's early spring of 2020, as long as the road gets reinstated, reinstated, so the public can see what reclamation really means to a mining area. Birds will come back, you can view some sandhill cranes, of course, there's wild turkey and deer present there as well. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul Sardona. I am addressing the Green Road closing as well. When I was driving down Clear Lake Road towards Green Road, and I took a right on Green Road, the first thing I see when I got there, when I'm thinking about living out there, was a sign that said "Natural Beauty Road." Absolutely gorgeous, rolling hills, green trees. I drove up to Clear Lake Road, I see amazing beauty of the lake and the surrounding hillsides. That's the reason we all moved out there. That's why people use that space there. We have cyclists, people walking their dogs, people on horseback. They all are there because of that beauty. These areas have been set aside for us to use because of their beauty. They've been set aside to preserve them for our generation, but for future generations to come. In 1916, Woodrow Wilson set up the National Park Service, and they set it up for a reason, for a reason to protect the lands that we so value for our children and the generations to come thereafter. Closing Green Road will alter that for sure. It will alter the beauty of that road, it will alter our abilities to use it in the way we have for many years, and it will alter our abilities to enjoy those lands which got set aside years ago for recreational purposes. There are also safety concerns as well. Roads, trees come down across the road, prevent emergency vehicles from servicing that area. With only one entrance in to a very rough road and a very wooded area, it becomes quite problematic for us. So as you're considering the decision to close Green Road, I'd like you to consider the recreational aspects of it, the reason this land was set aside in the first place, not to support a business, not to support a mall, a resort area, any industry to generate money, but actually to preserve natural resources for all of us to use this year, next year, and 100 years from now. Thank you.
Good evening all. My name is Tom Polter. I'm at 3780 Pebble Drive, and I'm here to address the Green Road closure and the continuation of mining by Agri-Head Industries. I believe that the Green Road mining project and the continuation of mining should be denied, and the Agri-Industries should be allowed to close when they run out of materials in approximately one to two years. For various reasons, losing Green Road permanently is unacceptable to all of the 20 residents that would be directly affected by this. They're going to address that, and I'm sure I've got plenty of support for that. I'd like to focus on some of the economics quickly. Just a quick rundown, crushed gravel retails $30, $40 a ton. Agri-Industries probably sells at wholesale $15 range, with their expected yield of 1.1 million tons to be extracted from the Green Road project. That gives them a gross income of around $16.5 million. Expected proceeds to the county are only around $250,000. So out of that $16.5 million gross income, the county is only going to see $250,000 out of that, and then the DNR is expected to get somewhere in the $600,000 range. With the established equipment and customers, one can reasonably expect that their processing costs will be relatively low. The county and most of all the affected residents, many of whom are represented here, are not getting enough for what we are giving up. Best interest to the citizens of Jackson County, I think, could be better served by keeping the natural beauty of Green Road and keeping it going. When I read the executive summary prepared for you by the Transportation Director, I was disappointed because I didn't find it reflective of the meeting that we had on Thursday. It was a great opportunity to be able to discuss some of the things, but in particular, specifically regarding the reclamation effort by Agri-Industries of the mined property, the first stage, if you go there and look there, it's not going very well. You talk about they're going to plant oak trees, really, it's a scrub brush covered with autumn olive and the black locusts are what's taking over. So we have just a continuation of invasive species. The only really nice roadbed that still lies out there is 100 feet setback that they're required to maintain, and that contains oaks, other natural species that have been established trees. The rest of it's just going to grow up and be allowed to be taken over by invasive species. Basically, I understand that this is a business. I understand it's a business decision by Jackson County, but I'd like to see three things.
30 seconds?
30 seconds, that's plenty. I'd like to see the damage done to the paved portions of Harvey and Clear Lake Road by heavy gravel trucks, particularly on the outbound side. Significant required more care than it currently receives. I'd like to see better maintenance of Green Road, currently washed out by recent rains, and would like the board to consider county maintenance of the portions of Hideaway Lane. If we're to lose all of our access and we're forced down to a single ingress and egress, I'd like to see some help with that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Mary Ellen O'Keefe. In August of 2013, my husband and I built our home on Cozy Cove, which is just off Hideaway on Clear Lake. We felt this was a great location to retire. It must be, because everyone on our street is at or near retirement age. So when you consider closing Green Road, imagine your parents, your elderly aunts or uncles, living where we live. Sure, it's a great spot, but it's critical that we maintain full access to emergency services. Since we moved to the area in 2014, Green Road west of Hideaway has been closed at least three times due to road obstructions, making it only accessible from Loveland, an access route you now propose to close. While I hear a 20-minute response is available for emergency services to clear obstructions, imagine watching your house burn or someone having a heart attack and having to wait an additional 20 minutes. It would feel like an eternity, could be fatal, and is completely unnecessary. I believe AI is doing what they can to be amicable towards us. It's now time for Jackson County to step up to the plate and guarantee you will keep our Natural Beauty Road and its access to Loveland open by rerouting it possibly during gravel extraction, and most importantly, keeping it open afterwards. While this may not be a high-traffic road, it is often used for running and bicycle races, and the cross-country team from Chelsea utilizes it every week. If you want to be, you say you want to be transparent with your citizens, so why haven't we been shown your long-range plan for Green Road? Why was last, why was last week's meeting called with just four days' notice? We have not heard a good argument as to why this road should not be rerouted to Loveland during gravel extraction and then kept open after AI finishes its mining. AI can have the gravel and our residents can be safe, a win-win for all involved. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jeff Clink. I have a cottage on Pebble Drive. My wife and I, I grew up in Wadley Recreation Area and all my life. I just hope before you guys vote that one of you, or most of you, could at least take a walk down some of those trails, and drive down Green Road, actually. I hope that you've done that, because there's not another one like it. You know, in another five years, what's going to happen? I mean, I think this is a five-year cycle, it seems like, that they'll just be coming back for more. When does it really, really end? You know, going back to Wadley Recreation Area, my family's sold land to the state so that it wouldn't be mined, so my dad was an excavator. Well, look what happened. I mean, it's bad enough that the DNR is exchanging this beautiful land at the expense of these hills disappearing. Anyway, just hope you guys take in consideration and actually take a look at it yourself before you make a decision. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Corey Kennedy from Leoni Township Board of Trustees. Just here with a simple request tonight, I've had a few residents in the subdivision over by Gillics Lake contact me. They're having some issues with speeding throughout the subdivision, specifically on Viking, Juniper, and Holly. And as I drove around, we don't have 25 mile an hour speed limit signs posted throughout our neighborhood. I'm hoping possibly we could get one on each road, Viking, Juniper, and Holly, and once we did install those, we could put the temporary digital signs that you see throughout the county to show people when they're speeding in residential areas such as that. The neighborhood's full of kids, Ridgewood vistas just off of it, and there's tons of single mothers that live there with their kids, so there's kids riding their bikes daily, and we just, we don't think people should be driving 50, 60 miles an hour through there. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rose LaFores, and I live on Short Drive off of Hideaway Lane, which is off of Green Road. One of the things that I'd like you to consider when you make your decision is that I've heard over and over how the DNR owns the land, I've heard how Jackson County Department of Transportation owns the road. However, as a citizen of Michigan and a taxpayer, I was under the impression we own this property as a community, as a county, as a state. And I asked my county representatives to put the residents first. We have seen natural resources destroyed, land extracted for business, with no return to the community that I live in. I just see the destruction and what's left over, and I ask the county, please, put the residents first. I also ask for more transparency. I heard that the meeting on Thursday did not have to happen. I looked at the agenda for this meeting, there was nothing out there on this. As residents, we're no longer back in the Dark Ages where we don't have information. We can find information, we're looking for our government to be open with us and make decisions, not only that we're involved, that involve us directly, but engage us as well. Because if we would have had a chance to work with you, we may be here talking about different opportunities for the county, talking about different opportunities for the community that we live in. But no, we were excluded from this, and we were told that, oh, we're sorry, we couldn't invite you all, we use the tax rules. Well, I moved here with my husband five years ago. We pay our taxes directly. I can guarantee you, I've paid my taxes for five years and was not invited to the meeting. So, thank you for listening to me, and I hope you make the right decisions for the citizens.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings of standing committees. Entertain a motion for the minutes from the July 24, 2018 meeting. We have a motion in support? Any items for removal? Any corrections? Commissioner Elwell?
I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, is this a consent agenda?
Oh, this is just before consent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Now we've arrived at the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Moved by Williams, supported by Leitner. Any items for removal? Commissioner Elwell?
Item 9B, under Affairs and Agencies, Equalization, L4029.
Any other items to be removed? Yes, sir?
That's under Agencies and Affairs.
That's under Agencies, that's a standing committee. Yep. It's further down. Any other items from consent? Ready to post the votes? The consent agenda passed unanimously. We've now arrived at Standing Committee, Affairs and Agencies, chaired by Vice Chairman, Commissioner David Elwell. Vice Chairman Elwell?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. First up, we have appointments. We have four different appointments. First is the Land Bank Authority. It's a term that expires in 2021. Catherine Martin is a current member. There were no applicants and no nominations from committee. And if there are no floor nominations, Community Corrections Advisory Board would be next. Again, no current member for that, and no referrals from committee. Third, we have the Upper Grand River Watershed Council. Glenn Remington is a current member. He was an applicant and is a recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? No hearing, none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Lastly, for appointments, is the Department on Aging Advisory Council. Howard Griffiths is the resigned member, and there were no applicants and no recommendations from committee, and the Administrator's Office will continue to advertise for applicants for all three of those. Next up, we have the item JC dot, the Green Road closure, and I assume, Mike, you're prepared to have Chris come up, and I've got a number of questions myself. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to maybe discuss it first before we have a motion, if that's acceptable.
That's perfect, that's what I was hoping for. So we'll go to an administrative conversation? Christopher? Would you like to start, David?
I would. And if I get too long, let me know, and I'll stop. So, Chris, I will start out with, I think one of the things that we asked for, if there was time to do it, was a traffic count east of Hideaway. Do you know if that, did you have time to do that or not?
We did. On the west end, we had, I think, about 50 cars a day. On the east end, I think it was like 13 to 15 cars per day.
Do we know if those were trucks from the operations era cars, or is there no way of knowing?
We do. There were five or six on the east end. I'm going from memory here, so my numbers might be slightly off, and maybe about 25% on the west end. We did these mid-week, so they could vary depending on activity, of course.
Okay. Chris, I've got a lot of questions, so they may jump around a bit, they're just in the order, I wrote them down. So, as I look through everything in the board packet, and for the benefit of the public here, this complete set of documents was on the county website, on the board agenda, with very lengthy documents on them that explain everything. But one of the things I didn't see there was an actual contract or an agreement with the aggregate company. There's the resolution to close the road and other documents, but I don't see an actual agreement. Is, will there be something formalized with them that we'll have to approve that speaks to the amount we get per ton and when the road would be reestablished, if that's what we choose to do?
Correct, and I can go through, when you're ready, a couple, three conditions, but I would look to amend the proposed resolution to basically authorize county administrator to negotiate the specific terms. So that's, that's what I'm thinking needs to happen in light of certain, and the recent events and what we've learned from talking with the residents.
Okay. So, is any of that an issue that would keep us from approving the other things here today?
If you'd like, I can explain the conditions that I would recommend.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then Representative from Agri-Industries is here as well to speak to you when you're ready for that. But we had a very good meeting on Thursday evening. As was alluded to in the public comments, we weren't required to have the meeting, but we chose to do so, as you recall, from our discussions at committee level, and we believe in that transparency, so we were happy to hear many concerns from the residents. The three biggest that I've noted that we can handle through our agreement would be number one, to rebuild the mined portion of Green Road, the part that we're closing, to rebuild it back to a road after the, the road is mined, it'd be restored as a road. But to also then, as part of that same condition, have a temporary emergency bypass open to traffic during the mining operation. And my understanding is that some discussions have been ongoing with DNR, between Ag Industries and DNR, and they are open to that, the DNR is open to that. The second condition would be to reconstruct and pave the west end and improve drainage, and we could still work to keep it as a beauty road status, but we definitely want to improve the condition of that road so that we minimize the risk of emergency access issues and get a new pavement on that road that's currently not paved. And the third condition, based on what I heard, was that the royalty revenues that we do receive, at whatever rate we do negotiate, would be used for road improvements in that direct area, the Waterloo Township area. So those, that's kind of a reflection of what I heard from the meeting in summary form.
So based, I mean, I've got a bunch more questions, but just based on those things, you said that DNR was okay with a temporary road, is Ag Industries okay with including that as part of the whole agreement?
I'll defer to Ag Industries, if that's okay to answer that question, if you want to introduce yourself, perhaps.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Rob Hayes with Agri-Industries. I'm a land manager for this part of our operation. I'm joined tonight by my, my boss, Brian Gazarovski, who's the environmental and land manager for pretty much the eastern half of the United States. To answer your question, yes, we'd be amenable to constructing an emergency access road. The conversations that we've had with DNR, however, have just been at the local level. They've got to run that up the flagpole to get, get others to approve that concept. So we're working with them and hope to meet with them soon to discuss details.
Okay, then another question may be relevant for you, is you talk about paving the west end. When would that be? I mean, at the beginning of the project, at the end, in the middle, when? If you have any idea?
Whatever's the most convenient for the county, I would imagine, as soon as possible is what you'd be looking for.
Okay. Chris, that's it for me on those questions, I've got a few more. There's an estimate of 275,000 tons at 90 cents a ton. So, is that what we roll with, or is it actually measured, and at some point it could be more, it could be less, or how does that work?
Oh, I didn't answer that. Yeah, that's, that's just our current estimate. It could be more, it could be less, but we guarantee a minimum prepaid royalty, I think it's 247.5, that's what's in the packet. If it's more, then we would pay you per ton on whatever rate we negotiate. Right now, we're saying ballpark 90 cents a ton.
And everything that comes out of there goes across the scales unnecessarily?
Yes, the extracted material, so stuff that we deem as waste, you get paid for as part of the royalty.
Okay. Chris, then for you, we've hit a couple of them already. The residents that I've heard, and I'll volunteer that I took a call from one of the residents out there today, and we did speak for just a few minutes, but she expressed a concern about blockage, keeping emergency services out of their neighborhoods on Hideaway and I think Cozy Cove are the two that are closest. And I guess I'm curious, I think I heard somebody say something about three times, the roads have been blocked there. I am curious if the roads have actually been blocked, to our knowledge, to where emergency services couldn't get in there, and then it occurred to me that the fact is that you're talking about, I think it's Clear Lake Road down Green Road to Cozy and Hideaway, but then from that point north, there would always be that problem, regardless of whether we kept a temporary Green Road in or not. And could we solve that problem, if that's really the problem, by going in and trimming trees and eliminating dead ones, or maybe making a more clear zone? And as I looked on the GIS on the map, it looks like, is that aggregate that owns on the both the north and south side of Green Road, west of?
That's the state DNR.
Hideaway? That is the state DNR?
Yep.
Okay, so they could potentially be amenable to making some improvements to make sure the road doesn't wash out there, right?
Yeah. One of the characteristics of a beauty road, as we know from a past action to approve one, was that we minimize the amount of trimming and vegetative work done in the area. So, being a gravel road with relatively low traffic volumes, that's exactly what we've done. That does come with the risks then of, you know, trees blocking the road during windstorms and so forth. We do patrol that, we do respond to 911 calls, we assist 911 immediately if they need to get through, we do our very best. I did learn more about that. I did learn more about that. I was enlightened at the neighborhood meeting on some of the issues they've experienced. So it seems clear to me that we definitely need to get in and do some tree trimming. And to your second point, I agree that we could look at that additional area, the tree health, the general tree health, take out widowmakers and other, you know, harmful branches and dead flora.
And then, Chris, I couldn't tell, I couldn't get the information on our county GIS website, but is Hideaway a private road from Green Road north then?
Uh, yes.
It is?
They're all private, correct. And the neighborhood has the right to talk with Ag Industries about what they would like to see in those areas. And that was brought up at the meeting as well.
And then my last point, I think, maybe, as I looked at GIS, I know that GIS sometimes can be off on what it shows for the boundaries, but my experience is that if it's off, the whole image has to be shifted one way or the other to square up the boundaries. And it's not an individual boundary that's typically moved in GIS to make it right. But as I look at the images there for what we show, the roads, certainly Green Road east of Hideaway, does not line up with what's there. What we're showing for the road doesn't line up with what's there. And really, from the Green Road intersection of Hideaway itself and from there east. So what steps would be taken to make sure, when we're all said and done here, that we know that we've got the new road in the right place? And I did print examples of that, if you want to see them.
Yeah, I would like to. I think we would talk with GIS about their records and their accuracy. If necessary, we could resurvey, find the property irons, make sure the new road is exactly where it needs to be, if it's off.
Okay. So then my last question is what you suggested here. I mean, I'm a little bit concerned about not having a contract ready for us to approve that lays out all these conditions. And I would like to see that and have it, I think. I support doing this, but doing it right and making it right for the neighbors as we can.
I think I should make you aware, Dave, that we have a solution after all the commissioners have shared their concerns. I have a suggestion I'd like to make, and I think that it'll make you a lot more comfortable with what we're gonna do going forward.
And then I've got one more comment about the three suggestions that Chris had to incorporate, which was the request, I think, by the residents to keep that money in that area because it's coming from there. And I'm a little bit troubled by that. I don't necessarily support that. And that is not what we've done on other revenues in the county that we've received. And I think we'd be setting a bad precedent. I think we should do what we can to make things right for them there through this project to keep it safe. But I don't support dedicating that money back to that area necessarily. And those are all my comments. Thank you.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just, one of the rationales for that, just so you're aware of it, is that Waterloo Township is heavily recreational lands. So if they were to ever impose a road millage, the revenues would be relatively minuscule. And they would not be able to afford much for road improvements. So part of the thinking was that it is the recreational lands themselves that are providing the income through the mining activity. So it seemed like a logical use of local sources there to provide locally derived money from the township for road improvements in that vicinity, just so you're aware of that.
Commissioner Duckham.
Thanks for your explanations here. And I could probably support this with a couple more, well, actually, just one more clarification. We talk about a temporary bypass road during the mining. By what standard would that be built? I mean, I don't want to, it needs to be a usable road? Where emergency services could get in? Be used comfortably by the people? I understand they might want to go one way or the other. Don't want to see a horse trail. I mean, it needs to be a good quality bypass road, maintained. My fear is we'd okay this and not define what a bypass road is into what standard. And it would be stuck with the end product. It may be unusable.
Okay. If it's okay, I'll have Aggregate Industries respond with what they were thinking.
Sure. Yeah, in a lot of communities that I'm familiar with, an emergency access road is about 12 feet wide, stone base with sometimes a crushed concrete cap to seal it up a little bit better. Makes it easier to maintain and possibly plow in the winter. If we, in fact, get approval and we enter into this agreement and we go ahead with the closure yet this year, that could certainly slip if need be. But that's what we're willing to do. We're willing to build that road along the perimeter of our mine, so heading to the west and northwest, back up to Green Road to allow emergency access.
Okay, I don't like, it doesn't settle well with me to possibly plow in the winter. We could have emergency services needed to get in there and find out the road wasn't up to standard enough to plow. And I think that's a necessity. No sense having the road if we can't use it. And the maintenance, I don't know who do the maintenance on it, keep the chuck holes or keep it scraped and smooth that where it's a usable road? Who's gonna do that? And who's gonna plow it? It's gotta be plowed.
Yeah, we would do it. When I mentioned plowing, we initially thought we could begin this project in October of this year, finish it up by September of next year. I've since talked to the operations manager. He thinks he can condense that schedule to eight or nine months. That's why, if need be, if it makes more sense to start this in April of next year, we could certainly slip that schedule.
I know gravel's needed, and it's gotta come from somewhere. And it's usually objected to when somebody wants to mine gravel. I understand that, and I'd feel differently if I was a resident there. But I think it's very reasonable to get a road, a usable road, that would be maintained and plowed for emergency access or a secondary exit, if they so choose. That's what the bypass road ought to be. My feelings. And would you approve the road, Chris? Or who would do that?
I think so. I think that's reasonable and part of the agreement, meet our standards.
Okay.
If you agree to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rodney?
Is a 12-foot bypass road enough to meet traffic both ways?
That was proposed, 12-foot top?
Although the traffic is not a lot, but I understand the fact that if someone's coming there and an emergency vehicle needs to get through there, are they gonna be able to pass one another?
Just to be clear, our proposal is to build an emergency access road not open to public traffic. It just allows emergency vehicles to get in from the east, should there be an obstruction to the west. So 12 feet is plenty wide enough for emergency vehicles.
Okay. So it's gonna be a one-way emergency access?
That's what we've currently proposed, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Daniel?
Just a question for clarification. You said if the west should be closed, or would that emergency entrance be available if it's quicker from that side?
Yeah, it would be available 24/7, 365, or however long the term of this project is, to police fire and EMS. We've got a gate off of Green Road. I would imagine barricades could be installed a little bit west of where our gate is. We'd install a Knox box so that emergency personnel can get into it, get into the gate, get through the gate whenever they need to.
Any other questions? My thought is to refer this back to the administrative office and have it come back next month with clarifications on all these issues and straighten out the emergency access so the neighbors can be properly, questions can properly be answered. We'll bring the agreement back after legal review, and Mike can present, we can have it presented next month.
I'll say I support doing it, but also move.
Thank you. We have a motion and support to postpone the decision until the September Board of Commissioners meeting upon administrative review by the Administrator Controller's Office. Does everyone understand the motion? Is everyone happy with the motion? Yes, sir.
Appropriate? It is time to define the responsibility Chris would take on to standard for the road?
I think the county administrator understands that directly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have another comment.
Commissioner Lightner?
With us meeting so late right now and standing committee is only being two weeks, is that enough time to work through this? Or should we defer it to October?
Why don't we give them to the business meeting? And just like the agreement we're gonna vote on tonight with the fairgrounds, we all know things get postponed if they need to. We meet every two weeks. It could go to study session in October. Follow me?
Yep.
Let's trust our administrator to come back with a solution to this dilemma. No, full board meeting this time. So again, we have a motion to postpone this decision to the full board meeting on Tuesday night in September, and that it be redirected to the County Administrator Controller's Office with full authority to negotiate and return to us with solutions. And since Mr. Bolt answers to Mr. Overton, that gives JDOT an opportunity to present all the solutions they have. Any further thoughts? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Thank you, Christopher. Thank you guys very much, also.
Thank you, commissioners. We look forward to working with residents. Thank you.
I think we're back to me, Mr. Chairman.
That's correct.
So this is the L4029 that I requested be pulled, and it's fair to say that we caught an error at Standing Committee. I actually emailed her. She confirmed it. And when I looked at it coming here tonight, there's actually two forms in the packet. The old form is there with the wrong figure, and the amended form is also there. And I think that was just a miscommunication between Delane and I about what to put in the packet. So the second amended form is the actual correct one, if you look at the board packet, that specifically it was the, I think the animal control was at a half a mil versus a quarter of a mil. So that's been corrected. So I therefore move the amended form, which is the second one that has the correct rates on it.
We have a motion and support. Any questions to the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
That's all the report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Carl Rice. Commissioner Rice?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Human Services has no business to come before the committee tonight.
Thank you. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Commissioner Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
We can't hear you, Michael.
We have one item to consider tonight, and that'd be a review of our financial audit. And I believe we have somebody here, or is this you, Mr. Administrator?
I'll speak to it briefly. To be frank, we both reviewed this at our study as well as committees. Tonight, I'm looking around, I don't see either the auditor or the finance director. However, I would point out that this is our standard audit. We did have an unqualified audit. And for those who do not speak auditor or accountant, that's as good as it gets. We have, the audit is as good as it gets when they use the word unqualified audit. I know it's crazy, but that is the language they use in the accounting world. The only challenges I thought that we had in regard to our audit was it took longer than I thought. And it took a little longer than it should have been. And not to throw anyone under the bus, but there were some departments that struggled with, they changed accounting software this year. And so they weren't fully prepared for the audit. So they were struggling to get the information to the auditors in a timely fashion. In the end, they did get it to the auditors, and the auditors found no problems at all with the information. And that gave us a outstanding rating. Questions? And frankly, if someone has, if you feel the need and you want to postpone, we can bring this back next month. You know, the audit was done in June. There's not a reason, there's not a reason to hurry or rush if we have questions that we want to take further.
Mr. Chair, I'll volunteer that I think got all my questions answered the last time we had go around with it, and I'm satisfied with those answers for now.
Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm good with the audit, too. I don't see we need to do anything to approve it, the acceptance of it or anything, so I'm good.
Entertained a motion to receive?
Will we receive the audit?
We have a motion by Commissioner Duckham, seconded by Commissioner Tompkins. Any questions to the motion? Seeing or hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Duckham? Thank you. Provided unfinished business? Any unfinished business to come before the board? I see none written. Hearing none from commissioners, we move on to new business. Fair New Fairgrounds Event Center Final Design Build Agreement. Entertained a motion? We have a motion and support? All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. Fair New Events Center Naming Rights Licensing Agreement. Entertained a motion?
No.
We have a motion and support? Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. That's so I didn't have to have you talk all night, Jeff. We've now arrived at public comment. Public comment guideline, each individual will state their names and have two minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Second round of public comment. Any public comment? Last chance. Public comment's now closed. Commissioner comments?
How do we go about, or what do we do with Mr. Kennedy's request for the road signs and his developments there?
I believe the Director of JDOT heard the notes and will then have to get with public safety within Leoni and the township to see if they can correct it. Commissioner Rice?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I've already emailed Mike Rand, who takes care of the safety matters, as well as CCD Managing Director Christopher Bolt on this matter. I dealt with this in the past several different times in regards to having law enforcement come out, speed signs and everything else. And again, they have the information, so I just want to share that.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Christopher O'Neal?
Okay, so I'm gonna try to make this quick, but I think that to make the most impact, I'm gonna play something real quick. It's only one minute, but I think that we should all be aware of the impact that we had on the kids that participated in the Summer 18 program. Just wanted to report to you guys, we had a 100% completion, which I thought was amazing. They felt like we were gonna lose 25% of the kids in that first three days of training that they get. And all the kids stayed on throughout the whole program. And this is one of the speeches that one of the young lady gave at the, I'll call it the commencement program that we had for, after they were done.
This summer, I was given the opportunity to work at Allen Shepherd through the summer 18 program. The machine works as greatly as it can. It is helping me become socially friendly by interacting with coworkers, giving me self-confidence as well as head of budget money. Before this program, I struggled to initiate and maintain conversation with people in my church or school. But while working at Allen Shepherd, I was given the opportunity to work at the front desk to welcome people as they came in. This taught me how to be confident in interacting with people that I was empathetic with. Learning how to budget my money was through a golf lesson I had at 16, and there was several anchors. However, it made me appreciate the value of the things I purchased. After this program, I can get it to others by giving them the opportunity to work in places outside their comfort zone and create skills that are not taught in school, such as how to properly conduct yourself in an interview, how to anchor the workplace, and how to give a proper handshake. This also gives each student certain responsibilities, ability to carry out in a workplace as well as in everyday life. I've learned my way to the front mannequin, and if you work at Michigan Works, we're given this opportunity to develop my skills in working at a place that's where I live. I also have to come and bake a hens. Amber and Delante are breaking this experience the best one yet. Thank you.
So I know it was a little jumbled, but just to give a synopsis, she was just thanking everybody for their participation in helping put the program together. She was saying that she's a very introverted person, and this job kind of helped her break out of her shell. So I just want to thank the Board of Commission for their support in helping make this happen and the county for taking on the responsibility of being the employer of records. And also definitely want to thank Shamire and Michael Kane and Angela over at Michigan Works for the great work that they did with this program. And Alex, of course, at Michigan Works and everybody else who helped. And a huge, huge thank you to all of the employers especially. The employers are who help make this dream of ours come true. Without the employers' participation, we would not have had this program, and definitely am looking forward to seeing what outcomes we have next year. And then I also just wanted to mention, I know I always talk about the back-to-school event that we do that I've been a part of for the last nine years. This was the ninth year. I want to sincerely thank all of the sponsors and everybody who helped with that event. This year, we gave out a total of about 700 backpacks to the kids going back to school. So I just wanted to give a little bright spot at the end of the meeting and thank everybody for the help.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none. Would entertain a motion in accordance with MCL 15.268, a personnel matter at the request of the employee for us to go into closed session. I have a motion and support. Madam Clerk, could you either post or call the roll?
Yes. I'm a yes if that's what you're doing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair of Personnel and Finance, Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that retroactively we approve a two, two, and one defined contribution increase for Administrator Overton. I'd like to also make the motion we do a 3% pay increase for Administrator Overton and also extend Administrator Overton's labor contract three more years, and that'd be out through 2022.
Assuming one motion, I'll support then.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
And that was a 3% just for this year? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. You tell me when you're ready. For the motion, was Duckham supported by Owo?
Thank you.
Yes. Did you get all four items?
Hi, Amber. Do you want to? Correct.
Any questions to the motion? You can verbally call them if you want to in the distance. Yeah, you can do that. Who's going to call the roll?
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Duckham? Mr. Owo?
Yes. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Or any other items to come before the board? Seeing nor hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Support? Any conversation? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?